Well.
Yeah. Did he? Decent shelter, man is a menace.
Okay. Sorry, I thought she was on.
It's alright.
Can you? Gosh. Yes. The whole of the number down. Well. This is. What did you want to do? So. So.
Do you ever get in this meeting? Do you ever get in these meetings?
Sometimes. Very little. Maybe.
Paper. This kind of story.
Of sounds. Probably.
Are you fixing? You're getting lost off.
Occasionally, I'll have to go.
Yeah, what?
Occasionally, people will just look at them. They always should have been out there and.
Yeah. Jill. And we. Your master prepared for financial part of the first day.
Kim's on.
Kim's on.
That's enough.
We saw.
We're going to start.
We start this week.
Oh, so.
We have a usually this is gonna start.
Yes.
In September. And I think we have about. There was fifteen, something like that.
How many adults?
A lot.
A lot, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Monday night. Wednesday night, Thursday morning, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday afternoon. Wow.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, good. So.
Do you roll two?
Yes. They were trying to rope me into it.
I mean, I've done it. I've done it, but I'm gonna pay their ball. Yeah. I've done it, I'm not good at it, but, yeah.
I chose that.
My son played a lot lately, sure. I mean, I don't want. I don't want his shit going because he sounds really. He just picked up a lot of stuff, plays. I couldn't get him away from baseball. Which, you know. I tried to give him a coffee, too, but he was just. Determined to do what kids do.
Well, you can stick them on you, like. Right out for one more day.
She's looking for her charger. Oh, so. She's very apologized.
Anything from safety? Anything from safety?
No.
Doctor, she says she didn't get us. But when is there free time or the times of fifteen to go and not only before?
Um, maybe though, really, any night. Mercy notes probably the only night that's really full where you. Probably wouldn't get on any. But Saturday night, Thursday, Monday.
Oh, really?
And Tuesday, that Thursday, that way.
Let's go to. Check it out.
Yes, and then Friday night, we. I think we only have. Teams. We only take that out of bounds. So. Yeah, guys, that's. Friday.
Okay, well. Do we need to roll call again? Dee's on, so we can. Uh, do we need to roll call again? Um, it probably would have hurt.
Okay.
I'll do roll call again, Mrs. A Iola. Mrs. S Iola. Mrs. Hines. Mr. Colomets.
Here.
Mrs. Laba.
Present. Uh, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, audience portioning, do we have anyone?
We do not.
Item D, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the added items of personnel approval additions and approve financial resolutions added. Uh, questions and comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Hines.
Aye.
Mr. Colomets.
Aye.
Mrs. Laba.
Aye.
Uh, we're on to number two, consent agenda.
Recommend the. Motion to approve the agenda? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, questions and comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Hines.
Aye.
Mr. Colomets.
Aye.
Mrs. Laba.
Aye.
Number three, added financial report.
We have Kim on the city back.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, Jill had mentioned that she was adding this to the agenda, the financial reports for July, but I do not have them available at this time. Um, I had been working with, uh, the auditors with the FY twenty four audit. As well as, um, payroll, so payroll hit the bank today, so. Working with Jared and Dr. K and Richie and Shay on getting payroll completed, so. Um, we are just a little bit behind on the July financials, I should have those here shortly for Dr. K to review.
Is there any progress on the audit?
Um, I spoke with David, he's the one that's working on our audit right now, he'd requested some more information. I responded to him today, um, that's all I know. At this point, um. When I spoke with him, he had, I had told him. I'll have everything ready for FY twenty four to, to back up as soon as he's done with. Um, the current, you know, the, the audit he's working on, so. Um, he was happy to hear that. He said he's, he's working as diligently as he can, um, to get everything completed.
Jill, do we need a motion on this one?
Um, with nothing to prove, probably not.
Do we need to table it?
Um.
Yes.
We can table it, I mean, we'll have a, a financial report next month as well, so we can table the August financial report to September, we can have both then.
Make a motion to table the August financial report, uh, be presented at the September board meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table the, uh, financial report to next board meeting, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Uh, Mrs. Hines.
Aye.
Mr. Colomets.
Aye.
Mrs. Laba. Mrs. Laba.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, number four, minutes?
I make a motion to approve the, the minutes from. What is it, July twenty second and July thirtieth board meetings?
And twenty eighth.
So, and still again, July twenty eighth, special board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July special and regular meetings, um, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Hines.
Aye.
Mr. Colomets.
Aye.
Mrs. Laba.
Aye.
Presentations, we have Miss Remick for Tiger Tots program.
Hi, thank you for letting me come and share our information from our twenty twenty five Tiger Tots jump start thing. Um, so this was a little bit different from what we've done in the past because usually, uh, they have summer school. Uh, right after school ends and we do Tiger Tots at the same time. This year, we didn't have type, uh, summer school because of the curriculum work we did. And so we decided it would be best to wait and have Tiger Tots jump start right before school started. So it was two weeks at the end of July, from July twenty first to the thirty first, uh, from eight o'clock to eleven. Um, our chart wells was great about having breakfast served at the table so the students could have the opportunity. To, um, eat at the table like they would when they started school, sack lunches were sent home. Um, students who had the opportunity to become familiar with school, some staff procedures, expectations, and they made friends. Um, they worked on reading, writing their names, drawing, and math. We had a kindergarten camp theme for them, prizes were given daily. And perfect attendance on the last day of Tiger Tots where we celebrated with the campfire, camp stories, songs, smores, and some more. Smore bracelets and totes they were given, so, um, we. I now came up with that theme because it was a summer school theme and, uh, summer theme, and so the kids really enjoyed all of that coming together. Um, when we started, we originally planned on two kindergarten teachers, kindergarten teacher, uh, Eliana McMillan and Shay Lee Gilka. And because we only had thirty kids that, uh, registered, uh, kindergarten roundup. So when Mrs. Miller came to me and asked me if I've been coordinated, I was thrilled because I've always taught summer school, I was disappointed that I wasn't able to do that. But I was grateful for the opportunity, um, as I started looking at the list, we had sixty two kindergarten students that actually registered, so there was an additional thirty two that registered online. Um, forty four of those sixty two students confirmed, we actually had forty three that showed up very early. Uh, we had to look at our numbers, we added Mrs., uh, Vanessa Tafoya to create our smaller sizes, giving each class fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen. Mrs. Tafoya is a life skills teacher, we looked at the data, we saw kids that had high needs. So we decided to use her as a push in and pull out program to get to know her students, she ended up working with nine of her students. And we added, uh, Kelsey Switzer, who's the first grader, to come along and teach with us, so we could still keep those small, um, class sizes. Um, we averaged about, I had to turn in a lunch order based on how many students were there, and our average was about thirty eight to thirty nine lunches a day. We had twelve students that had perfect attendance, students who missed were previous obligations, but we also did have some absences due to illness, it seemed like. They hit a class at a time, and so, um, just like regular school. Um, some of the takeaways that I really enjoyed was the timeframe. If you've ever seen first day of kindergarten, that first day was pretty crazy, my transformation by the last day, which was only eight days, was pretty amazing. So, um, students got the opportunity to create relationships with other students and with staff. Staff got to observe, work with, and document the needs of the students, there were lots of positive relationships already established with, uh, families. And they had fun, um, so it was a great, great program. As the coordinator, I was able to make those connections with families right away, assist them with resources, I still get messages occasionally because. I use my personal cell phone since, um, school wasn't open, so I'll get questions about. School and different things that I don't mind because I work with every student in the building, and so, um. First day of kindergarten, I already knew forty three students, and so that was a huge, um, relief for me. And, um, just to see the kids from the first day crying at Tiger Tots, and then they show them. Regular school day, and they are like the champions, they are just super excited because it was such a successful program. Um, I want to thank Mrs. Miller for trusting you with that program and Mr. Wilson for, um, writing the grant for that program, and. I see it very, very valuable, I was gonna have a couple of teachers come and I don't know what came up, just to share their experiences, but I really. Huge kudos to kindergarten teachers for what they do and, uh, the struggles that they have of getting kids. Um, calm and ready for learning, and they're just, the whole team that I worked with this summer was phenomenal. And so I really hope that this is something that we can continue to do for those students and their families in the future. Any questions?
How does the numbers compare to prior years?
Um, you know what, I, I haven't done it in the past, but I would say that it was higher. Because in the past, when we're running summer school, they have Tiger Tots and they've always just had two s- teachers.
Okay.
And I believe their numbers were still less than twenty, they talked about fifteen, and so I would definitely, from my experience, is that this was higher.
Okay.
That's great.
And then do you think the new, the new timing of it was more beneficial than having it right at the?
I do, I think the maturity in the summer helps, but I, I know some kids were really sad because they're like, but school doesn't start for too long. I'm like, yeah, but teachers need that time to get ready, so. Parents even did say they wish they couldn't continue one because they were sold into it, they were pretty excited, but I do think they retained more. By waiting till the end of summer to do that, and then we were able to have like the lunch program there. So they could experience all of that as well, and it sure helped teaching forty three kids how to open a mill versus the first day of teaching the eighty seven that we have, so, yeah.
Well, I love Tiger Tots, that's a program that I really enjoy, so I'm glad that. We're gonna continue to do it year after year, and I think it really does benefit the kids.
I do too, and very grateful to be part of it because I got to see a different side of it versus teaching summer school, which is helping kids get caught up. To introducing schools in this format to kids that were scared but excited. And like I said, the transformation from the first day to the last day was huge. So, something I'd never see unless I was a kindergarten teacher, which I don't.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds like a great program. Hey Jill. You know, people minute. Hey, think a lot. Screwed up like I lost. I know. Can't take me anywhere. So it keeps going too. I can. From numbers it. Okay.
You all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay, um, superintendent report.
All right, so, um, got a few things here tonight. Further to want to begin, just giving an update beginning of school, um. We had a really good opening, students, um, high school and middle school have been there, junior high have been there for two weeks, elementary started last week. Um, teachers were really excited, it was fun walking around and seeing all the. Kids excited to be back, um, we do know right now our enrollment is down at this time, same time last year. We were twelve twenty three right now, this time last year, our enrollment was twelve ninety four. Um, so it's a loss of about seventy one students, we are working on, um, seeing where they went, um. We do have, we're able to pull those reports, we're starting making some phone calls and see where our students are at, but, so right now, we're down seventy more kids.
Wow.
Um, twenty six at the intermediate, three at the primary, six at the tiger trades, and thirty seven at the middle school, high school. The junior high, high school, sorry.
Wow. Thank you. That's a lot in comparison to prior years, isn't it? Do you know?
Uh, you know, it's really a fluctuating. It's fluctuating numbers still, it'll take a little bit.
We do know that's the smallest kindergarten class we've had in a while. And that, I mean, that's, you know, gonna carry on for many years. Um, unless we have a lot more family moving in at that a great level.
Um, oh. What did we budget, what was our budget, what was our enrollment budget number that we budgeted on?
Yeah, it was three hundred and five point five, or thirteen, uh, one thousand three hundred and five point five.
So. That's proper.
Well, but it's gonna average.
Right.
So.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we're still able to average it.
Right.
Um, but yes, it is. It's a significant number, we gotta work on it.
That's the averages, we gotta just make sure that that doesn't get messed with in the legislature. Next session.
Yeah.
Because that was a big fight this past session. Was the average.
Well, at one time, I thought they were gonna, it was a done deal, they were getting rid of the average, and then it got rescued at the end.
Right. So. Okay.
Next, just a reminder that the CASB convention is scheduled for December eleventh through the thirteenth. Um, we've registered the board, um, and we have spots for the new elects. Newly elected members, but that is the eleventh through the thirteenth. Um, roofers have repaired the roof at the junior senior high school. They finished last Thursday and repaired around thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. They put three coats of silicone roofing on six hundred feet. They probed and repaired twelve hundred and ninety feet of seams plus fifteen curbs and penetrations. They also repaired multiple, um, scuppers, that means holes, and skylights.
How did that fare in the rain last night?
They haven't got any phone calls today.
Well, that's, that's a good sign.
It's on. And the last thing I have for superintendent report, well, um, is Mr. Wilson is going to, um, talk about some things we're doing academically.
Oh, I'll give it kinda just read, I know we discussed before, it's the one with onboarding with TNTP. I'm gonna continue that with our TRPCBA, but TNTP really kinda came back before, so Josh was back with leaders, um, right before school started, gotta go through some more PD. Um, with them, when it really started to focus and highlight our strong start, so it was just our, our intentional planning around, um, what the first few days of school looks like. How often, I mean, just very detailed, uh, work, and so starting to look at that, um, identifying our big rock, so just a highlight for our primary and intermediate. Our big rocks and kinda ties towards our, um, plan for term, but it's, um, our big rock number one is still planning and implementation of a high quality curriculum. So really, how are we, now that we have this math I am, how are we using it on a day to day basis and helping teachers with the planning side of that? Um, and then our second big rock is, um. Um, and then our second big rock is, um, building teacher capacity to deliver high-quality instruction. Um, and naturally diving into first leaders, how are we coaching our, our teachers? How are we giving them feedback to help push them to the next level, how we support them? And then kind of breaking that up on how we're gonna do that. That looks at our weekly PLCs and kind of some plans tied around that and how we're gonna strategically, uh, attack that with TNTP. Um, right now we've got weekly meetings, um, whether they're virtual or in person, uh, as we dive through. So for example, tomorrow we have, um, Josh coming in to, I believe he's at primary tomorrow, and then intermediate the next day. Um, something that's gonna become more, um, conversation, are you guys gonna do the arc of learning? We talked a lot last year, these ninety-day plans, um, with UVA. Arc of learning is basically what TNTP does, is they break down your year into four quarters. You find like your strategic, um, goal for those four and then you break from there down, um, all the data, all the steps that you're gonna do to try to meet that and then set your goals. So as we start doing that, or really we'll have those presentations to you guys on what the arc was and our data towards meeting those goals. Um, we had our trusted math came in for a two-day professional development, that was August seventh and eighth. Um, it was, it was really good, we were able to really spend really a day and a half with the IM folks. And then that second half of the day, we spent with TNTP, literally taking exactly what we got from that training and putting it into our everyday practice. Um, we've got CDE training coming up for all of our, um, leaders and coaches, um, coming up on the fourth, we're going down to Pueblo. Sam Snyder that we've talked about, Dr. Sam Snyder that's come in and helped us, he's actually leading that professional development. And then Josh, who, um, wrote the professional development for CDE is the one that's helping us here. So he's kind of banding with that to make sure that it's as beneficial for us as possible. Um, and then just to know that we're gonna get those performance frameworks here in the near future. Um, we're looking forward to see what our test scores are looking like.
What's the timeline for giving those?
I, I wanna say I read something that said we were hoping for next week, um, but it kind of fluctuates just a little bit whenever it, um, whenever it's quicker.
It was supposed to be the end of August, but we're still late.
Hmm.
But seems like sometimes they delay it and sometimes they won't let you know snippets, it kind of, you know, be back and forth, but.
For the math training that, um, they did with the staff, does that happen every year with the IM folks?
So, so. It, it can, so as I, as I started looking at it, so we did essentially the training, which was like the, the one point O, um, which was just your general, um, entry level, and then they offer different tiers of training. So really it's kind of where you can look at, okay, let's say you have a high turnover rate that year, you have a bunch of new teachers, you might want to go back to that one point O training versus if you have some retention that year, some folks that are, they're used to it, you could look at booking that two point O. Um, that is something that we've discussed, I've discussed a little bit with TNTP on how we can strategically bring them in or we would want to for the next training. One thing that was kind of odd that we looked at was how our schedule was laid out, um, for days for Fridays to come in. Seemed like they were pretty heavy on the, on the back end of the school year rather than the front end, which is kind of led to some constraints with trying to get those in, to get a little bit more training front-loaded. That's something that I'm hoping I can communicate whenever we have a calendar committee to think, hey, it's, it's nice it is to give a little bit of rate at the beginning of the year to be strategic. A little bit more time front-loaded will be huge, so there's something that we're looking at.
Any other questions for Jared? All right.
All right, thank you, everybody, thank you.
All right, new?
I guess one, one thing to put Dr. Crumholz on your to-do list, I saw an article, we all know about this, the cell phone bill that we have to have a policy by next July. That'll take some time to develop. I think we should, my opinion is we should start working on that sooner rather than later.
Can you just amend even the one that we have?
I get, if that's what we're gonna do, or, yeah.
My last part of the update is just, uh, all sports are here, we got our first football game Friday night. Um, softball and volleyball have their first home games next week. Um, so it's, school's officially started once we start playing volleyball, football, and all those sports. Um, and that's all I have for the, for my report.
Any other questions or comments? All right, for seven, new business?
So, um, recommend approval of revised policies AC, KLG, and JRA slash JRC on first revised readings as presented. Policy AC was revised due to personnel changes. And policy KLG and JRA slash JRC were revised due to technical and stylistic changes by CASB.
Make a motion to approve policies AC, KLG, and JRA slash JRC.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve policy AC, policy KLG, and policy JRA slash JRC on first reading. Roll call.
Mrs. Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Colomitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Laba?
Aye.
Letter B?
All right, um, this is a recommendation for adoption of regulation KLG slash R on first revised final reading as presented. This regulation was created due to the passage of Senate Bill twenty-five dash two seventy-six.
Make a motion to approve K, uh, to approve policy KLG dash R.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve regulation KLG dash R on first and final reading. Questions, comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Colomitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Laba?
Aye.
Letter C?
Okay, um, I recommend approval of revised regulations ACR one, ACR two, and AC dash R three, and exhibit AC dash E one, and KLG, and JRA slash JRC on first revised final reading as presented. These regulations are exhibit, were revised due to personnel changes.
I didn't have all that.
No, we're just approving ACR one, two, and three, and exhibit AC. Power juice, superintendent Crumholz.
Uh, make a motion to approve revised regulations ACR one, ACR two, and ACR three, and exhibit ACE one.
Second.
Well, I have a motion and a second to approve regulation ACR one, regulation ACR two, regulation ACR three, and exhibit ACE one on first and final reading, questions, comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Colomitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Laba?
Aye.
Item D?
Okay, um, I recommend tabling the purchase of the Kubota RTV until next month. Um, I'd like to wait as this item was not previously budgeted and just see where we're at before we make this big purchase.
Make a motion to, uh, table the approval of the Kubota until the September board meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, or to table the purchase of the Kubota RTV in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred. Uh, questions, comments?
Is this something that we have to put out to bid?
Um, I think there were, um, two or three quotes received and the, this is the cheapest quote that was attached.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mrs. Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Colomitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Laba?
Aye.
Item E?
Okay, um, recommend approval of the intergovernmental agreement for the school resource officer in the amount of fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars as presented. And this has been budgeted for the same as last year.
Can entertain a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between East Utara School District of Bar One and the city of Lahana for school resource officer services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the amount of fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the intergovernmental agreement between East Utara School District and the city of Lahana for the school resource officer services for the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the cost of fifty-five thousand six hundred. Questions, comments?
Does that include Hank?
Alan.
You have both of the talks.
It's both of them, alright, two for one.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Hines?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to know if we were going to have either quarterly or a, a presentation in like six months or anything? Cause we've asked for that before in the past.
We can make that happen. Absolutely.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Colomitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Laba?
Aye.
All right, item eight, uh, board comments?
Um, just have one quick comment, I went to the Arkansas Valley Four-H auction a couple of weeks ago and I was very pleased that there was an entry from our TTA Four-H club. So I thought that was pretty cool, so that was, that's good, that was great, so. Um, and also appreciate Dr. Crumholz, your efforts of getting out and about, seen in the community, so it hasn't gone unnoticed.
I just wanted to thank all the teachers and administrators that put in all the work before school started, um, to get on track with the new math curriculum and everything going on with that. Uh, so thank you to everyone for that. D, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Crumholz for his first Facebook Live. I appreciate that, I think a lot of people miss that. Um, and then just everything that he's been working on in the background so far. And also I am looking forward to attending our CASB regional meeting with Sarah this Thursday. Hopefully Sarah's expression did not forget we were coming to that. But we'll bring back great info to share with the rest of our board.
All right, with that, at seven fifteen, we are adjourned.